Good morning, everybody. Sarah, can we start the, or Bendy, can we start the roll call, please?
Yes, committee member Pratt.
I'm here.
Labrie.
Here.
Newkirk.
Here.
Janeway.
Here.
France. Committee member France.
I'm here.
And Chair Penner is excused. Thank you.
Thank you, Minnie. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Great. So at this time, we'll open for public comment. So time for any member of the public to address the committee with issues pertinent to the committee but not listed on the agenda for this morning. Are there any public wishing to speak?
Chair Labrie, I'm not seeing any raised hands right now. If you want to go to the next slide, we'll do a brief description of how we're doing public comment for this. So if you are attending the meeting and you'd like to make a comment, please use the raise lower your hand button that you'll see in, that you'll see in the GoToWebinar, your little GoToWebinar dashboard. So if you'd like to speak to a particular item or make public comment now, please go ahead and use that button and then we'll be calling, we'll be calling on you if we see that.
Thank you, Sarah.
So we do have some, some attendees here today, but I'm not seeing any raised hands right now.
And while we're at it, thank you, everybody for attending. I know this is awkward at times, but Councilmember Harmon, thank you for being here, others. So moving on in the agenda, committee members, you should have received the minutes. And if there are any corrections or additions now, it'd be a good time. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to, to adopt them. So any comments on the minutes? Hearing, seeing none. Maybe we could get a motion?
Okay, Labrie had motion. This is Ed France said motion to approve.
All second.
Okay, I've got a first and a second. Any discussion on the motion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sarah, how do you want to do that? Do you want to hand raise or a roll call?
I can do a roll call.
Excuse me, Minnie will do a roll call.
Committee member France.
Aye.
Pratt.
Aye.
Labrie.
Aye.
Anturk.
Yes.
And Janeway.
Hey, who's doing the presentation for occupancy?
Aye.
Committee member Janeway.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Minnie. All right, moving on to item number six, occupancy report. Mr. Dayton.
Mr. Chair and committee members, good morning. Thanks for being with us this morning. Really appreciate all of you doing this. And as, as Chair Labrie said, having patience with us as we do meetings on, on, on GoToMeeting. It's actually been pretty good. I think the experience and getting the public actually more involved. This meeting is not televised. So now people who want to review this meeting can actually download it from, or ask for it because we have a recording of it. Just a note on that. We're going to go into occupancies and revenue for reopening and Sarah Clark is going to give us a presentation. But I'll just, just some opening comments is that we're really working with staff in this process of as COVID settled down a bit and the governor started opening up with the lots had been closed because frankly, we had no customers. We didn't want to have the kiosketeers out. And so it's been a really interesting thing to, to, to understand when is the appropriate time for us to open, open the lots again. And just as a reminder for people who, who may not actually be thinking the way it works, but the lots, actually, we charge hourly charges in the lots of, you know, to maintain the system and to have the revenue for the system. But the other big thing is that it's a customer service oriented positions. That means that the parking facilities, because we charge, employees are not likely to park in there all day. And then the spaces that we have, the limited amount of spaces are available for customers. So as the downtown was opening back up, and we're going to talk a lot about that this morning, is how, how was that reopening with State Street, with the Parklet, things that the staff has done that have been extraordinary. One of our big questions was when do we, when do we open the, the, the garages? And of course, we didn't want to open and have the revenue not meet the, the, the cost of having kiosketeers there. And then the other thing is that we didn't have on-street enforcement because on-street enforcement, it also stopped. So the way it went down and is that the, the enforcement started one week and then the next week we opened our, our facilities up to the public for, for revenue charging and then also for make, putting that governor on it so that the customers would have ample parking. So Sarah's here. Victor might, he's, he's on, he might have some other opening remarks. But thank you, Sarah Clark, for a presentation on, on just kind of walking us through on those occupancies and, and that process of reopening.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Dayton. So, Mr. Chair and committee members, in addition to what Rob mentioned in getting ready for the reopening, talking about the cost issues, there was also the, the issue of the safety, addressing the safety of our customers and also our staff. So staff took, went to great lengths to prepare training protocols to, to be able to ensure the safety of the public and staff. Part of that meant implementing a, a process where the customers would have a contactless transaction where they would simply insert their credit card into the exit columns. Staff was trained so that we could encourage and prompt the customers to do that, effectively eliminating any kind of person-to-person contact. If in a situation where a person didn't, a customer didn't have a credit card, or maybe it was declined, or maybe it was some other electronic issue, staff was also trained to be able to affect a contactless cash transaction or a fee due type of situation. So that was also a critical part of, of the, of the training that staff went through before we did the reopening. That pretty much covers it. So we'll turn it over to Sarah. She can go over the numbers. And like Rob said, it was, it was really about trying to, to see when the numbers in the lots justified having staffing in there so that the revenue would offset the cost of staffing those lots. So Sarah, go ahead.
Sure thing. Thank you, Victor. So as Rob mentioned, we began staffing our lots on Monday, June 22. So we've been up and running now for a little bit over two weeks. We are staffing on a limited schedule. That's similar to what we staff on holidays, our holiday schedule. So the gates still go down and the fees are still, still begin to accrue at around 7:00 AM. However, we don't have staff accepting payments and collecting those fees until about 11:00 and they stay on until about 7:00 PM at night. So we're running a little bit more of a limited schedule to just pick up those peak hours and make sure that when we are staffing, it's cost effective to do so. And we're not actually losing money by having staff out in the lots. So as is expected, the occupancy is down fairly significantly over where we would usually be for this time period. So you have some graphs in the report that was sent around, but we'll, we'll pull out some highlights. So 2018, 2019, our peak occupancy on a weekday was around 70% system wide. And with the average occupancy system wide at about 50, 52%, whereas this year, we're peaking only at about 35% of our spaces occupied at a given time with average occupancy of around 25%. So that's obviously down significantly. And then on the weekends, you know, it's fairly similar for, in terms of peaks in the past couple of years. We are slightly higher on the weekends. We do see people out enjoying themselves on State Street. And so we get a little bit more occupancy than we peak around 37%. And then the average occupancy is around 21% right now for that time. And so, and that does include the holiday weekend. We are seeing lots 11 and 12 are really our busiest lots right now. Lot 11 is actually quite busy. We're also seeing some good numbers out of lots four and five, the Victoria lot. But the other garages, for example, lot two, which during the weeks, does have a lot, during the week, tends to have a lot of commuters. Also a lot of shoppers for Paseo Nuevo. Those occupancies are staying quite low at this point. Lot six is quite far off of where it usually is. Lot six is our only lot, or excuse me, the Granada Garage. That's our only lot where we actually have, we tend to have more permit holders in there than we have hourly customers during the weekdays. It's heavily utilized by commuters. And so with people continuing to work from home and businesses continuing to be closed in some cases, those numbers are, are significantly lower than what we'd usually see. Lot 10 is also taking a bit of a beating. So we'll go to the next slide. So what that's looking like for revenues, our total revenue for the same two-week period in 2018 was around $194,000. In 2019 is about $186,000. This year so far, since we've been open, we've collected about $56,872. So that's a 69% decrease over last year, which again is to be expected. If we're looking at daily totals, our daily totals are coming in around about $4,000. It was lower over the holiday weekend. We only came in, I think, around 25, or excuse me, around $4,000, we came in around $2,500 over, over the holiday weekend. So it was a bit slower again, which is probably reflecting the closures that we saw. And, and generally on a normal, a normal day, particularly weekday in the lot, where we're bringing in around $10,000. So again, that's off fairly significantly. So Megan? So we're going to talk a little bit about the cash credit breakdown. As Victor mentioned, we are encouraging a more contactless form of transaction. Generally speaking, out of our paid transactions, we tend to see about a 60-40 breakdown. People do tend to prefer to use cash and historically have preferred to use cash in the lots. We see about 60% of people paying in cash, about 40% paying in credit. That number has inched up over the years, as you can see from the figures from 2018 and 2019. Now that we are strongly encouraging people to pay with credit card, we were hoping to get that up to around 80% credit card transactions. But it is taking some time for people to adjust to that. We have seen the numbers increase, but on average so far, that number, they basically, that ratio has kind of flipped. So around 36% cash transactions so far and 64% credit card transactions. So people are still wanting to pay with cash right now. So those are the big takeaways for that one. If you have any questions, we can go ahead and take those.
And Sarah, as a reminder to committee members to turn on their camera if they've got a question, right?
That's correct, yes.
Seeing none? Thank you, sir. You, you have more? Wait, are you done?
I don't have any more right now.
Great. Well, thanks. It's always good to look at occupancy and, and those rever, new numbers are obviously not surprising. But we'll, we'll look forward to, you know, staff thoughts on how we manage that going forward. Moving on then to item number seven, Parklet update.
Mr. Chair, you may wish to request public comment.
Oh, are, is there any public comment on the occupancy report, item number six?
I am not seeing any raised hands right now for members of the public who wish to speak. If you want to go ahead and raise your hand, this is the time to do so. And I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, the Parklet update.
Mr. Chair, committee members. So this item is geared toward giving you an idea of, of what's been happening since, since we opened, reopened downtown the Friday before Labor Day. I realize we've had a, one meeting in, in June where we kind of explained this. This is going to be a little bit more pictorial. We're going to have actually pictures of the evolution of what we did. So I think it'll be a little bit more informative. But I start with this picture because this is where we were. Unbelievably, this is lot 12. I don't know what we're going to be calling this in the future, Motorway Lot or something. This, 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 this was the state of downtown. Just not a lot of people out. Next slide. The people who were open were trying to scrounge as much business as they could. Hey, we're over here. We got coffee. Come on, someone buy something from us was kind of the feeling. Next slide. If you walk down State Street, you, you had the feeling that was kind of, it was, it was pretty creepy, ghosty. We had our friends on the street or sometimes referred to as homeless, really were proliferous downtown on State Street. And we, we were all trying to figure out if the governor opened, how, how this would go. And one of the things that in discussing with the, the council members and the economic, the economic development manager is about like, well, how do we move forward? And the big issue or the nut to crack for downtown was that we knew restaurants were not going to be able to provide enough interior or enough, enough dining area to survive. That the governor had said, hey, outdoor dining, okay, indoor dining, not okay. And then there were phases of gradual opening. Just a side note, last Friday, the governor shut it down to 100% no indoor dining. So we're kind of back to where we started the, the first day that we opened State Street, which was the Friday before Labor Day. Next slide. So the council decided on an approach where they, they decided to close the entire street. And staff was really behind that. Go ahead and close the entire plaza, which the, the parks that we could easily close right away. We'll talk about the 400 block a little bit. The was from Haley, which you're seeing at this intersection all the way to Sola is where we did it. And the idea is, or was at the time, is let's close it all and see, let's see who comes out and puts their restaurant space onto the plaza. That was, that was the, the thought process. We were able to get some trees donated from, from a, a local philanthropist who said, hey, I've got some, I got some trees to kind of decorate the street a bit. Those trees went through some, some serious shock and got a little brown. But they're coming back nicely. We've been taking care of them diligently. Some people are saying, how come you don't water the trees? Yes, we're watering the trees and taking care of the trees. But this is what we're, this is the delivery of the trees. This was, this was that Friday that we closed. Next slide. And we, you could see we, we positioned the trees. There's, there's generally two trees at every intersection, except this had three because this was the end. Next slide. We met with the business owners in the street because the main thing we were trying to figure out is what are we actually going to, how, how can we accommodate them best? The first thought was that at their, all their dining would be in the street. And then you would, you take your food from the, the front of business to the street and to a restaurant. They all wanted to have the restaurant up, also up against the building. So that became kind of a, a challenge for us. But it was great to, to kind of in real time, meet with people and figure out what, how do we best serve their needs? Next slide. This is early on. This is, this is that Friday. The street you can kind of see on the left is closed. Joe's is starting to come out onto the sidewalk. This was kind of the issue we had at first is, is the, a clear path along the sidewalk. The way we've ended up is we don't close the sidewalk for any reason, for ADA issues. So you have to permit a path that the tables are supposed to be six feet away for safe distancing. That six feet also provides a safe path of, path, path of travel for anyone that has disabilities through the sidewalk. And then the people can walk through there, of course, just to acknowledge it, there's this, there's this tension between people walking by where you're eating. You don't have a mask when you're eating and then they're, they're walking by. So that tension does exist. And we've had to deal with that throughout the, the evolution of this. Next slide. But people came right out on the street on that Friday, businesses. This is the Cruisery. Ed Haley came right out on the street right away. Next slide. Alexa skipped to happy hour. So signs came out. It, it's permission granted, just, just do it and then we'll adjust as we go along was the Friday message to everybody. Just go, go and do it. We'll be along to adjust. So no, and this is kind of the theme, I think. And this is the, maybe the tension with, with a, with a government agency that is used to getting all the plans in advance. Make sure they're exactly right and then put everything in. This was just a little bit of guidance. Go, go put stuff in and then we will come back and regulate and adjust. And by the way, the, the business owners have been extremely responsive to when we're saying, hey, let's, let's adjust. Next slide. Councilmember Gutierrez, I didn't realize he had an electric bike, but there it is. Pretty, pretty awesome. Saw him down there on that Friday. Next slide. And this is the unbelievable thing. So this is still Friday. The street is, this is just the afternoon. Street was closed. I think the trees were in there by something like two o'clock. So I think this is like three, three o'clock, four o'clock-ish. And I'm, I'm beginning to be astonished because during the COVID, everyone's isolated. I haven't seen anybody. And all of a sudden, there's people appearing on the street. Next slide. This is that Friday. Again, I'm, we're a little blown away because we have, will business return to State Street? Will, will people even feel safe being there? And it turns out they felt too safe being on the street. You don't see a lot of masks being worn. So this was a, this was a time where, you know, people were thinking, hey, it's over. And, but we had this huge resurgence, resurgence of people on the street. And then again, this is that Friday. Next slide. Farmer's Market did an adjustment. So this is their 600 block. Actually, yeah, this is the 600 block. But normally they are in the 500 block. We asked them to push up. Next slide. So they pushed up and occupied the, the, so this is still the 600 block, I believe. Next slide. They pushed all the way up to the 700 and 800 blocks. So they're not used to being on this block. The reason the cones are all there is because streets and public works repaved the entire asphalt section of the plaza in anticipation of reopening. Notice there's no lane lines on the street because we just repaved. That has really served the reopening really, really well because there's no lines. And when we got to Iman Nari, people are chalking on Sunday. We're actually chalking on the street. The cones are because we were finishing up with some concrete work. Next slide. But the farmer's market has been really cooperative. And now they, if you go there on a Tuesday, they are now three blocks and really flexible and nimble to keep, keep spreading out as restaurants pop out into the street, the market just accommodates them and just spreads out more. Also behind, next to the Balboa Building, over the, on the other side of the, of this picture, the Makers Market is now on Tuesdays as well. So you've got a lot, a lot of activity going on. Next slide. This is our State Street guideline that we put out. This is not the, the most recent one that's up there now. I think that this guideline has changed something like eight or nine times. As new things came up, we just, we just kept adding to the guidelines. And I got to hand it to the downtown parking staff because this is not something we borrowed. This is something that was developed in-house. And all the stuff that, that the team has been putting out has looked really good. And then again, we didn't think this up over a six-month period. We thought this up over about three days. So then we kept changing it nimble and flexible as, as more things came out and then reposted the new version on our website. New site, new, next slide. In the 500 block, we didn't know what was going to happen. This is, I think, I think this is the, the next week. We saw, we saw Institution Ale put out the, this, this fence. And we're like, oh, someone's actually going to come out a little bit more formally. Next slide. And that's what they did. You could see in the background in front of Clay Holdren's place. And Sambar didn't open until I think about two or three weeks after the opening. But the materials they were using at that time were not permanent. They were, they were just temporary, trying to put something up really fast, which was the idea, get open, get busy, get income. Next slide. I just love this picture because the bike racks are being used the other direction in the street. I don't know why I love that, but, oh, and I think there's a Neena siding there on the upper right. So, you know, I think that, you know, that's the, that is the way we have really rolled. This has been a really good coordination between PD, Fire, Administrator's Office, Public Works, Community Development in getting downtown up to, getting restaurants open again and getting things going again. Next slide. As time went on, we saw more and more people coming out into the street, which is really what we wanted. We didn't know how many people would do that. But they really have become delightful spaces. Next slide. Then we had other requests about a street closure. This is Lama Dog. There's, they also were limited with the amount of people they could have in. They said, hey, is there something you could do? We did what's called a half closure. This is one car goes at a time. Since then, we put what's K-Rail barriers on either side of this in case we have errant vehicles going through here to stop the vehicles. So it's, it's a very nice, the way it ended up is very nice. Then we had some issues with the neighbor and their delivery on the left side. So we pulled them back another three feet so we could get more parking on the other side. And, and Fire wasn't, wasn't allowing the parking on the street to get by with the fire trucks. We pulled them back enough so the fire truck could get by with the parking on the street. So again, it's just adjustments as we go. Next slide. Here you can see a little bit, weeks later, Joe's is coming out a little further in terms of occupying more space. You got another restaurant, Old King's Road, or I think it's called the Gioria is, is out there. Next slide. We had other people who are not when the State Street closure come out. This is Finney's. They came out. They're actually wrapped today. They're all wrapped all the way. They're all wrapped all the way around the other sidewalk on the other side on Mason Street. Uh, again, just as a reminder, so the governor's closed all interior restaurant space. So more expansion, contraction as the orders have changed. Next slide. We had a pavement project go through on Cota Street during the closure. That was pretty interesting. Next slide. This is Arigato. They have changed their place now to have, to add heaters and lighting. Very elegant space. This is the 1200 block. So they have a lot of restaurants. Good Lion, Molly's, uh, other restaurants are open on this place. Uh, next slide. And then here is the 500 block. So completely different. This is, this is now, we're four weeks into it. The, the restaurants are clearly coming out. They're forming a line. The rule is they have to be seven feet back from the center. Fire department is, uh, that gets fire department a 14 foot clear. And you can see down on the, in the left of the picture in the screen, you can see that's Red Piano coming out further. Uh, so this is a, this is another example of the, the complexities in the jogs. I think the next slide, let's go to the next slide. I think it shows it a little bit clearer. Yeah. See, you see there, there, uh, Red Piano is coming out at an angle. And then it matches the O'Malley's, which is, uh, has a platform where the bicyclist is in the, in the way background. So what happened is, is that Institution Ale actually has a leased property next door to their, the property where they're set up now. And we called them up and said, hey, are you going to come out? Are you actually going to come out? Because if you do, then we have to pull back Red Piano because they're not within the seven, uh, feet of the center. And so Institution Ale said, yes, they were. They did. Within the next week, we pulled Red Piano back to, uh, be within, within the guidelines. And then O'Malley's actually stayed, even though it looks like it's further out. The street widens because the right turn pocket is there and they're actually in compliance, 17 back from the center. And fires comfortable with that maneuver. Next slide. So really getting going, um, really a lot of activity. You can see some people are wearing masks. Uh, it kind of changed a bit. We, we were trying to get signage out there to, to get people a little bit more serious about the masks. Next slide. This is my favorite, uh, adaptation of Public Right of Way. If you look really closely, this is, uh, O'Malley's has put two pipes over two bicycle hitching posts to form a table. Uh, I, I think we should probably have some awards for what's, uh, the most amazing public, public, uh, right of way adaptation. This would get it for me. Uh, and you can see they have a, they have, they have a platform. O'Malley's put in a platform. So you see the red curb down there in the lower right-hand corner and their platform matches the sidewalk. So, uh, really nice ADA access into the restaurant here. And, and, and I, let me just pause and say, and I'll, I'll try to mention as much as I can of where we've done this. But the, the issue has, has been the, the key or, or major issue we've done as we've, if, as we've shaped this and the staff has been really involved in working with individual businesses and the accessibility, accessibility committee is, it is ADA issues. Because we need to make sure that every parklet, every, uh, state street dining, outdoor dining experience meets ADA. It's, it's something that we need to do. It's the right thing to do. And so as people have built, that has been the thing that they have missed, even though we have it now in the guidelines. We've missed the opportunity. They've missed the opportunity to put in that. And we've had to come back and say, hey, no, you gotta make some adjustments. Uh, so we'll show you more about that, how that's worked with the parklets. Next slide. The other thing staff did that was absolutely brilliant that we had in the works already was this new commercial loading, uh, sign. And what it is, is State Street is the loading and unloading location for all these businesses. That's the way it's been. So now State Street is not open to those vehicles. How do they load? So we had this in the works for Uber, for Uber Zones as a, as a way for them to drop off. These are at all times. You see at the bottom of the sign, at all times, uh, passenger and commercial loading zones. These are now located on the zero blocks, either side of State Street in generous amounts. And this is our new sign and way to accommodate Uber, to accommodate passengers who need to load and unload, to get to the restaurants, to get to State Street now that it's a promenade and for commercial loading and loading. So another kudos to staff for coming up with some great innovation on, on how we adapt to this promenade, uh, space. Go ahead. Next slide. This is the Parklet Guidelines. It is expanding now to a third page that will have the ADA guidelines right in, uh, in, so, uh, in the actual document, hopefully to grab more attention and, and encourage businesses to follow those guidelines. This is a iteration like eight or nine. Uh, and again, they look extremely beautiful in my opinion. This is our staff, uh, being creative. The picture on the right in the, uh, in the black and white is an actual Santa Barbara street. You know, really good graphics showing how to build a parklet. We'd ask for six feet from the curb. And then, um, and then we had all these, uh, details about when they should call us for, can it go into a red zone? No. Can it go into a commercial zone? No, but call us. And then where it can go. And people were calling us and going, so what's the, what's the process? And they couldn't believe it when we said, follow the guidelines. And then when you're done, send us a picture at the email at the bottom. And they just could not believe that that was the process of, the, one of the greatest joys of this experience has been staff working with businesses and having them feel so thankful that we are, we have their back, that we're, we're, they, they feel that we're concerned about their bottom line. Uh, and, uh, safety, of course, ADA access, absolutely. Uh, but they feel that we're, we are being flexible and nimble to accommodate them. Next slide. This is our, uh, first parklet that was completed. This is, uh, at Savoy on Figueroa Street. Next slide. Uh, there has been an evolution of decoration with, uh, flowers, in this case, lighting, uh, interesting settings. A lot of creativity is going into this. Next slide. This is, uh, next door to Savoy. This is Los Arroyos. Uh, this is their park that you can see down in the, in the right, the left corner, uh, the sign, you can't read it, but that is our, our temporary curbside pickup, which was also very successful during COVID. Uh, staff put out signs so that, uh, businesses could pick up, take out. Next slide. Just some, an example of some signage, uh, for Los Arroyos. There's a lot of things that ABC required and, uh, other guidelines, uh, health and safety required. Um, next slide. Uh, this, uh, is on Annapamooine. This is Milk and Honey. So you can see a little bit different aspects of this one. It's a platform. Next slide. Showing some of the safety features, the, the tape with, at night, this lights up really bright in someone's headlights. Next slide. This is the Blue Owl. So now, now you see a covering. They've got some artificial turf, a little bit, some more planters, some umbrellas. Next slide. Uh, this is really interesting. The Foxtail, this was one of the earlier ones. And what's interesting about this one is that, uh, and, and this is a real challenge for parklet construction is that the curb, uh, and sidewalk is here, sidewalk's up and then the curb goes down. But then the street actually goes up because it has a crown in it to the middle. Is the highest point in the street is the middle and then the water, it's designed that way. So the water runs into the gutter. Well, the challenge with that is, and in this case, is that, that the asphalt gets higher than the sidewalk. So when they built this one, they didn't, they didn't cut that down. And so this one has a 3% slope in there. So, um, if you're having a drink at Foxtail, watch your beer. Might slide off the table. Uh, next slide. Really interesting on State Street, Chase Bar Grill. They have had quite an evolution. Uh, we accommodated, you see a gentleman standing there in the middle of the picture in the planter. He's actually not stomping on plants. We actually accommodated the DG path through the, uh, through, through the planters so that they could get directly to their customers. In this, in this season of COVID, the requirement is that the food has to be served. So it's important to have that pathway for the food to come into the customer. Next slide. And then, uh, what you'll see is in their evolution, they kind of added more. They put in the platform. They wanted to kind of cut it off from the street. So people would come to the, the Hostess Center. Uh, next slide. And then you can see how they, they've used both sides of the sidewalk. And so you're walking through here. And, and again, th- these are the, these are the types of things. We, we had to pull them back a little bit to get that clear path of the six feet. And then watching the umbrella heights, they have to be eight feet. So, or seven feet. So there, there's a lot of different issues at play and staff has been really good to, to work with businesses along the way. Next slide. This is Jill Schalhub standing in her parklet. She was on, uh, Anna Kappa. Anna Kappa is a little bit higher speed streets. So the higher speed streets, we want to have a little bit more safety. She actually has, uh, go to the next slide. I think we'll, we'll be able to see, uh, actually go back. The, so the, the planter that, that she's, um, you can see it behind her. There's a planter and there's actually one that were, that photograph goes over. They're 1,000, uh, pound planters. They're, they're metal. Uh, and, and, uh, so that, that was, uh, our, her, our approved design for her to deflect vehicles that are, that might be errant in this case. Uh, again, the issue is mainly speed, uh, that we're concerned about. And, and, uh, sorry, Santa Barbara Street. Santa Barbara Street has a little bit higher speeds. Next slide. You'll see how she did, uh, adopted for ADA with a ramp. Um, and, uh, these, it's important to remember that all these parklets are temporary. And so, uh, this is, this ramp is not four feet wide. This ramp is not the, the, the preferred slope. Uh, but in meeting with the, the accessibility committee, this was, uh, uh, this passes muster and honors the accessibility, uh, approach. So this was a good move. Next slide. K rails required on Anna Kappa. This is an evolving, uh, parklet. There was a contractor, gosh, I'm forgetting the name of the contractor, but the contractor, uh, donated labor for parklets, which was really cool. And this is one of the ones that they donated labor to. This is a winery on Anna Kappa below Ortega. Next slide. Here's their ADA accommodation. You can kind of see it from the sidewalk across the planter into there. That, that actually meets ADA elegantly, uh, more than four feet wide and beats the, uh, eight, 8.22% slope. Next slide. Uh, this is one of our, uh, this is a little kitchen. This is, um, on Ortega. We're still trying to get compliance with ADA on this particular site, but, uh, well done from other aspects, uh, from looks and visibility, added lights. Next slide. This is the press room on Ortega Street. This is the same. This was another donated contract work. They won, they won this work. Next slide. Coast Village Road has been a little bit different in how people have approached it. I think most of our controversy has been on Coast Village Road. Uh, this one was built in a commercial loading zone in red, uh, without permission from us. Fortunately, we can approve this, uh, based on its location. And fortunately they did also accommodate, uh, ADA, which was really great. This is Renaud's. Next slide. And then we have the area in Coast Village Road that has the, uh, not 90 degree, but angled parking. So this is a little different because it's not parallel parking. Uh, it, we can let them go out further. Some of them gone out further probably than we're comfortable. This one probably passes mustard. We probably wouldn't have approved it this far out. Uh, but this is, um, Tre Lou and you can see their actual concrete. Uh, they're actually concrete blocks, very large con- concrete blocks, uh, and then planters above it. So the, the restaurant, people who are in the restaurant in the parklet are not even seeing the traffic and are deflected from noise as well. Next slide. Uh, this is, uh, I think this is Trautry of Victoria on Victoria Street. And again, they provided an ADA lit, uh, ramp right where that indentation is beyond the tree. So sometimes what we would do, and this was the case for this one, is we see the construction going on and then staff would, will go out and talk to the contractor right there and say, hey, did you think about this? Did you think about that? And so that, that's kind of part of the approval process. Hey, it's, uh, and I think, I think one of our staff members sent this to our phone. New parklet site, you know, Victoria Street, you know, everybody rush in, talk to the contractor. So that's kind of how it's been going. And, uh, this was one of those situations. Next slide. I think we have some more Coast Village. Uh, okay, not yet. Uh, so this is the, uh, this is back on State Street again. As we've gotten further into it, more decoration, more seriousness on how the, how it looks. Next slide. 1300 block is between Sola and Victoria. We had a bus up there for a while. The bus is now not there. We, like, so back to the, back to the beginning. We, we, we closed the whole thing. Council said, let's just do the whole thing. And then we said, okay, well, let's see what works. Now the surprising thing is the entire plaza, we didn't know this before, but the entire plaza pretty much works. State Street Plaza from Victoria to Haley work. 1300 block, not so much. We had a couple of different issues. We had people who are, uh, not a lot of activity, people activity. And then we have businesses on there who are saying their business was actually negatively impacted with the closure for, because of access and because of parking. This is the one block on the plaza that we, uh, shut down to vehicles and opened to people that is, uh, had this parking on either side. So you'll look in the, in the, uh, in the background there and you'll see we encouraged, uh, Opal, Jane and Carlitos to build parklets in anticipation of some form of reopening of the street. And we worked with the, with the businesses on the street to formulate a plan. And that plan is now, uh, perpendicular parking, actually perpendicular parking on both, or one side of the street, either side of Arlington. The way you enter the street is through Arlington Avenue and you can turn right or left. Uh, and so it's one way, both directions from Arlington Avenue. The, you can exit your, with your vehicle on Victoria or on Sola. So still closed to traffic on State Street from Victoria and Sola. Uh, they're very happy with the solution so far, but again, flexible and nimble. Let's just see how it goes. We can make adjustments. Uh, very happy the bus is gone. Uh, next slide. We've seen all sorts of musicians pop up. Technically they're, uh, not allowed. We've had various forms of, these ones are all masks, masked. I wish I had the video to play for you. It was really delightful to see. Uh, next slide. Really musicians that I hadn't seen before, uh, coming out. Next slide. So bikes, bikes, bikes versus pets. This is the great issue. Uh, so on State Street, with, with, with parklets, it was ADA issues. With State Street, it's definitely bikes and, and let's get more people wearing masks. So bicycles. So crazy that the pedestrians are saying, hey, why are these bicycles aren't on my new open street? And the cyclists are saying, who put these pedestrians on my new open street? And, uh, and then we've got a crew that's out there, pretty delightful group of, of kids. Uh, there's a, probably three groups of kids that spend their days doing wheelies on State Street. You know, it, it's, uh, a lot of people have complained about the wheelies, which, you know, it feels unsafe. They've got a high degree of control, but what's really great is there's kids on State Street. I mean, that's the news. We got kids on State Street. And, uh, for years we've been talking about, how do we get the youth and family? How do we make this a family street? Well, guess what? It happened with the promenade. We have families on State Street. So we've been dealing with the bicycles, how to do it. In this particular area, we've put a dismount zone. Uh, so in, on the 500 block, we're asking people to dismount. Not a lot of success. I mean, it was successful a little bit at first, but if you don't have enforcement, uh, it's less successful if no people are there. uh, it's less successful if no people are there and more successful if more people are there. Next slide. Bike, the bike culture has gone off on State Street. I think we mentioned at our last meeting that we were with you that bike sales during COVID went through the roof. Uh, parents taught their kids how to ride bikes. And so we're seeing this renaissance of bikes right now. If you want to get your bike fixed at the shop, it's probably not going to happen for weeks because they're backlog. And if you want to purchase a bike, that's going to be hard too. You're probably going to have to drive to LA or, uh, down to San Diego because locally uh, where, uh, the bike shops are, are stock starved. Next slide. I, if you had told me this was going to happen, I probably wouldn't have believed you. The amount of kids and parents on the street has been delightful, just amazing. It really sets a tone for State Street. Here's what's happened is people are treating State Street in this, um, kind of after in the opening of State Street, they're, they're treating it like a park. So it's not just a place to shop. It's not just a place to, and people are shopping, by the way. It's not just a place to hang out and eat. It's also a place to just be outside and, and, and uh, skateboarders are on the street. We, we've allowed those. We have rollerbladers on the street. We have, you see this little boy with a, a tri scooter. People are coming out and enjoying the street just to be there and to be with other Santa Barbaraans. Lot of local activity is out on the street. Next slide. Think this is just, uh, well, the rollerbladers, you see the rollerbladers. Next slide. Dogs on the street. Uh, this is the owner of Service Master and his inpatient daughter up there in the, in the background waiting for him. They, they had never gone bike riding before together. Now they're, they had been doing this multiple weekends on State Street. So new activity, family activity, drawing families to State Street, something we wanted to do. How do we do it? And then, uh, good thing that came out of COVID. Wow. Well, you've got this promenade. We're actually families are returning. Uh, next slide. More families. I, I've, I've just been amazed that, uh, you can see the, the cyclist beyond the father. I don't know. I'm guessing she's probably in the six, five, six. Really young kids, first time riders riding on State Street. Uh, pretty unbelievable. Next slide. More of the ambiance. You can kind of see this is the, uh, this is the eleven hundred block. Next slide. This is the, uh, one of the signs we put in. This is the cyclist must, must, uh, uh, ride with courtesy and caution. We have the no wheelie, uh, sign, five miles an hour is what we're asking riders to do. And then we put in the dismount zones for this one. Next slide. There's that sign a little bit closer. Uh, we also have a, a different sign. I think it's coming up. Next slide with, uh, with masks are mandatory. There's the dismount sign, sign. Skateboarders, bikes, we want you to dismount in this area. Again, we've had mixed cooperation. Next slide. Masks have been a really big issue. Uh, this was in yogurt land. I couldn't help but snap this picture of someone who couldn't make it into yogurt land unless they had a mask and they used, I think that's the service vehicle number. Uh, but, but yeah, there's very different opinions about whether we should have a mask or not. I think it's gotten a lot better, more serious with this last weekend was really they had a lot more. We, uh, the ambassadors actually handed out masks, uh, in, in the streets and, um, and, and said, you know, where's your mask? And then ha- handed them a mask if they didn't have one. Next slide. So we, we put out signs that said there, uh, the face coverings are required. So now they're red signs out there instead of blue that they're not recommended. They're required. Next slide. Here's the ambassadors on, uh, on the holiday weekend. This was Saturday handing out masks. Next slide. And you can see they've got the, what the, the signs they have, um, compliter, complimentary mask available right here. So we were really pushing the masks. Uh, and a lot of success. Um, I know Victor was staff this weekend. I, I think he's in the, in the shadows there. So a lot of activity, uh, uh, we kind of did a hall, all hands on the weekend out there to try to ensure more safety and cooperation. Also, a note in the background, you see the cyclist dismounted. Uh, again, when there were more people in the, on the five hundred block, when there's more people walking, the dismount sign works. It's kind of like the judgment of the cyclist. You want me to dismount for no people? Where if you see people, you want me to dismount? Okay, I get it. Next slide. So I'll just finish up with this. Uh, I think that, um, I think that one of the things that, uh, has transformed the promenade and why the council, well, maybe you don't know this yet. So I'll announce that the council has, has formed a, a subcommittee to talk about the, the permanence of the promenade. So now that we've shifted to this, this temporary ordinance ends in, in, uh, on the, on Labor Day weekend in September, this all ends. So theoretically this would all come off the street and be done, but the council is saying, no, we need to look at permanence. And I would just end by saying one, just trying to, to connect the dots as to why this feels so good and uh, go to the next slide. Uh, you know, this is, this is one of my dinner experiences. This is at Laura Knight's place. And, uh, so what's really different about this experience and what's really a powerful community um, feeling is that when you walk on this street, everyone sees everyone else. So people would actually see us. We would see them. You can walk down this street and normally everyone would be in the restaurant. You wouldn't know who's there. Now you're walking down and you can see who's there. And we, we get these unscheduled encounters with one another is what's going on on State Street. Unscheduled encounters. In other words, I didn't make an appointment to be with you and have a, a friend date. I'm just seeing you on the street. And when a community sees each other on the street, I, I think that is one of the most powerful things about how a street feels and how it builds community and really gives the locals a feeling that this street is for Santa Barbaraans. And I think that's the transformation. But I try to put, I thought a lot about this, put my thumb on it. But about what it, why it's so successful and why people are so attracted to this experience. I think that that is an important element to, to keep in mind is that we're seeing each other. Santa Barbaraans are seeing each other without scheduling appointments and it's, and it's a joy. And it's building our community in a successful way. So I think that that's the last slide. Uh, and we'd happy to, we've got, you know, all the staff are, are here and would love to, uh, answer any questions about this experience that we've gone through, which we continue to go through and continue to make changes, uh, as we shepherd it along.
Mr. Dayton, that was a, a fun report and, and it's fun to have all the, the pictures and the anecdotes. Um, to the committee, if you have, if anybody has any clarifying questions, maybe we could get those. And at the same time, uh, members of the public, if there's anybody wishing to, uh, speak to this topic, um, we'll take some public comment right after we have any clarifying questions and then we'll kick it back to the committee for, for further reflections, if that's okay, Sarah. So to the committee, go ahead.
I was gonna say, that's not a problem at all.
So to the committee, any, any clarifying questions on the report? Then, uh, and to the, to the public, if there's anybody wishing to, to comment, if you could, uh, use the raise your hand feature. And we'll take some public comment now if there is any.
Okay. Again, any member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter, uh, please do use the raise your hand feature. I'm not seeing any right now, but we'll give it another second just to give everybody a chance. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm not seeing any public comment on this matter.
Great. Thanks. So back to the committee for, uh, comments. Um, go ahead and turn your camera on, in your mic.
Their speechless, Mr. Chair. Oh yes, here we go.
Mr. Janeway.
Hi there. Um, uh, thank you, Rob, and thank you especially to all the staff for your responsiveness to uh, all of the business community and, um, much kudos for keeping, uh, it's glad, I'm glad to hear that your, your regulations or your guidance to the businesses has evolved and evolved quickly. Um, I, I think everybody can acknowledge that that's been received very warmly. Um, would you say that, that in, in that frequency of your updates to those guidelines, are you, are you sensing that the business community like is, is, is glad for that quick response? Or are, do you have any businesses that are coming to you saying, you know, like it's update fatigue? You know, I, that, that's just one point of clarification I wanted to ask.
Uh, that's a really great question. Um, committee member Janeway. Yeah. Not, uh, usually we're just dealing with, um, we're not going back to parklets again and again and again with updates. I think that the challenge for us has been the degree to which a, a contract, usually a contract, usually not the restaurant that's building the parklet. Uh, usually a contractor. And by the way, it's Allen Associates. Shout out for Allen Associates who, uh, gifted uh, so many people parklets. So thank you, Sarah Clark, for reminding me of that name. Uh, what we've seen is that uh, that's the trick is to get them out of the gate to, to, we know all the rules. We know how they're supposed to be. Each space is a little bit different because there's different, uh, widths on the sidewalk. They're accommodating different elevations, different slopes. We, we don't find that we're going back to them again and again. It's just a one, one time. We have to go back and say, hey, we need to do this, we need to do this. And yes, we've getting a lot of, a lot of cooperation. And, and I will say that in some cases, businesses are not just, um, surviving, which was our goal. Some of them are thriving. Like I, I think if you talk to Clay Holdren on the five hundred block, uh, he would say, these are some of the best numbers I've seen. And so, uh, in some cases, we're, we're actually pushing them to higher levels. Now, I think that's going to change a bit with the new, the new government or governor's order last Friday where we're a hundred percent closed on restaurants. So now more than ever, those outdoor spaces are really, really important.
Thanks, Rob.
While the other committee members thinking about, uh, any comments you might have, uh, Mr. Dayton, I have two questions for you. One, uh, are we collecting? And Ed will get to you next. So but, uh, are we collecting actual uh, data points as opposed to just anecdotes? And, and what would you like to collect that you're not? Uh, do you need any support for that? Because I, oh, you know, the, the decades long conversation about whether street closures are positive or negative. It will come up after COVID is kind of resolved. Uh, and, um, my second question ties in, or rather a request that staff would make sure that DPC has a seat at the table for any long-term planning or, uh, closure. Um, uh, type of, you know, visioning committee. Uh, so maybe to the data point question, you can speak to that and then make a note of the request. That'd be great.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. You know, it's in, in planning, there's the, the age old argument. Uh, do you build it because people, you have the data to support it or do you build it so they'll come? And, and that is the challenge in planning. And I think we just discovered the answer. If you build it, they will come. Uh, at least for this season, right? At least for this season. And the, the things that I'm concerned about as a planner, as we move forward, you know, as someone who has for thirty years been asked the question, one is State Street closing? And then having, you know, pitchforks on either side about, no, we're never going to do it. You know, if you, if you shut it off for vehicles, my business will die. And uh, and there's, there's some truths to that. That's not, that's not mockery. There's some truths to that. You, that's what happened in seventy-five, the great year of the American Main Street closure. Most of them died. Uh, and the, and the key ingredient is, um, in my opinion, is what do we want our downtown to be? What, people talk about us across the world for our architecture. What will they say? What do we want them to say when they think of Santa Barbara? They think about the architecture. What do they say about Santa Barbara? We need to, we need to develop a why for our downtown, a purpose for our downtown, a community purpose, the things that are most important to the community. And then design a street and a downtown that fulfill that, that vision, if you will. And so that's what I'm going to be pushing as a, as a staff member, as a part of, you know, many staff who will be part of this. Jason Harris, of course, uh, Nina Johnson, uh, the, the community development, um, department, public works folks, fire department. Uh, there's, there's all sorts of elements to go into shaping a street. But I think that if we can agree as a community, as a council on why we are, where we're going, what's the end game for downtown, then we will design a street to, that gets us there. And I, I think it is, I think it is a street that is, that is open to people and has a, has designed for people and for this community engagement that we, that we're so delighted with. I'm delighted with personally. I, I can't get enough of eating down in the five hundred block. Because I love to see, uh, my neighbors. I like to see people I know. I, it's just, it's a really cool thing. I don't have to schedule anything. I just go down there and I see people. So, uh, data points, you know, we've been, we've, we've got a file full of parklets and when they came up and when they're going, that'll be an interesting separate conversation. Do parklets live? What happens with HLC, um, you know, Historic Landmarks Commission? And could you design a parklet that meets the, 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 uh, Spanish revival test? You know, there are no guidelines that are, this is the Pueblo Viejo Parklet. Would we develop those? You know, I think there's a lot of questions to be answered. And then we need to consider, we're going to be having to consider, uh, in, in addition to the elements of the actual street design, I think we're going to have to talk about land use. Uh, restructuring, what are the land uses that go on the sides of the street that now no longer has a vehicle? What does that look like? Is it a different land use? What, what is the, what is the land use activity that supports the why for the street, the street to be how it is? Uh, and then again, it's, uh, it's that local feel. So, um, but any other data points that you were thinking about that you specifically?
Yeah. And just, just to, to go on the record and to clarify, uh, I'm, you know, supportive of closing uh, state. Uh, and I think this has demonstrated that this, you know, that there's a lot of interest here. My question is more data points for, um, you know, for instance, well, there's uh, the, the new way that, uh, different uses are accessing that area, you know, the data points about bicycles and pedestrians and uh, seating accidents. All of those things that would help to support a, a new vision for how the street would work. So that's, that's more kind of my, that was the background to my question. But then regarding side streets and parklets, side streets like, you know, Figueroa where Los Arillos and, and, uh, Southwest have taken advantage of that. Um, uh, data points that would help to support the conversation about the extension of sidewalks on zero block on either side of state. Those are, those are my interests. So I'd love to see Figueroa be the, the test pilot for, uh, expanded sidewalks. Yeah, at some point, yeah, you know, we're already talking about, or we were talking about the crosswalk, the mid-block crosswalk. And, uh, so that, that, those, those data points that would relate to, um, fine tuning future closing as opposed to, uh, data points that would support closure versus not closure. I, I think we're getting a big picture vision. We don't need that so much. Any?
I think from a parking standpoint, that's insightful because as the, as the demand for our system goes down or has been going down, I think, uh, uh, Chair LeBree, your idea of having, uh, wider sidewalks on the zero blocks, which would mean less parking. It, it, there's a, there's a data to support that. We have to kind of see how, how it continues to evolve. Particularly this year is probably going to be the, one of the lower years, but for other reasons. But yeah, that, that has been slowly trending down. So it would be supported.
Yeah. And I think that just reminds me at some point, um, you know, COVID will be behind us. you know, COVID will be behind us largely. And the question of when to remove parklets or should we, you know, pull back on some of the outdoor dining flexibility and such will come up. And I, I would hope that the parking committee could have a conversation about supporting or how we feel about keeping parklets and, and these closures in place to, to see how the community reacts when they don't have to sit, you know, outside or they don't, you know, there, there, those restrictions have been lifted.
I think that'd be extremely appropriate. And, and just in case you've forgotten the, the, when we've done some reorganization in the past, downtown parking is now responsible for the management of parking citywide in that, in the on-street, on-street parking. So it'd be extremely relevant and important to, to meet that request and come back to the committee when we get to that point. And I, I estimate we will. And I think, I think with the governor's order now going down to, you know, a hundred percent closed for the interior. It's looking more and more like there might be an extension into, into some, some aspect of the fall for those parklets. And then what someone's probably going to ask the question, can I keep it?
All right. Good. Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Any, any other questions or comments from the committee? This is just an update. We don't need to. Mr. France.
Great. So first off, I just want to thank you Chair LeBree for hosting, for chairing while I had morning technical difficulties. Local internet providers, but I really want to appreciate public works and transportation and downtown parking. I think that the promenade work has been clearly throwing a lifeline to our local businesses and also to our revenues. Right? I think this, this responsiveness is exactly that, the type of leadership that we've needed more of and that, that you all are exemplifying. And I really appreciate the iterative, continuous improvement of this whole process for parklets because clearly here we are in an emergency and we can't perfect a system and then provide it for everybody. It, it has to be an iterative process. And I think we've been way more responsive than, than many similar communities. And I think we've benefited as, as a result. So I, I will, and, and Rob knows this well, I think that we are, we are victims of our own success here in, in, in multiple ways. I think that the, you know, we're very fortunate that right now, probably the biggest problem I see is that 500 block. Because as you're mentioning, there's, you know, the first day, there's all these people, families out, kids out. And people wanting to be on the sidewalk, people wanting to be on the street. And I think the, the exact sort of the, not having to have an appointment and just seeing people out. Like I had that experience at the farmer's market the other day and it was just so, so nice. I think the challenge though is we're also in a pandemic and the physical distancing is so important. And, and that's why I continue to sort of harp on the, the 500 block issue of basically my, my concern being in the next iteration, there's sort of fire and police access, but then there's also like, how were we, what tools do we have to reconfigure so that we can create a little bit more space? So there's the outdoor dining and there's space for people to walk and people to bike. And then when people are seeing their friends, they don't just clump and block everything. Cause at that point, the 14 feet is just simply not enough. You know, and the physical distancing isn't happening. And that's actually one of the, the concerns that I've heard is just the lack of physical distancing on that block. So, you know, and I think in terms of, as, as Chair LeBree has pointed out, thinking about, you know, past COVID, how could we reconfigure the sidewalk and also the green space and other utilities or street furniture that's been on the sidewalk to continue to create a little bit more square functional space for the restaurants that might not be, you know, affordable now, but that could be in the next iteration. So I, my gut is that the outdoor dining is here to stay. But anyway, I, I just appreciate all the creative work that the entirety of the public works department has, has put into this.
Thank you, Mr. France. Mr. Newkirk.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of follow up on some of the comments from Mr. LeBree regarding the parklets and kind of the permanence. And I kind of think of parklets as like a tactical urbanism kind of thing, which is the idea is you're doing it outside of kind of the normal rules and you're just kind of, but also that it's temporary. And you can see with, you know, the things that are getting built, those aren't, you know, super long-term or they'd have to get maintained and updated. I would suggest, you know, looking down the road where those are working. You know, not make them like, not continue them as parklets necessarily, but look at make extending the sidewalk. If they're working that way, we don't need parklets. Like parklet is a hack job kind of. Where if that system, if it's working there and, you know, we don't need that parking, which I don't think we do on those side streets, certainly, you know, the zero blocks with our underutilized lots and garages, then, you know, rather than just maintain parklets and create like design standards for parklets, we just build out the sidewalk and maybe lease, you know, add lease revenue or, you know, some kind of other increase in revenue for the city, but like really make that a permanent thing rather than kind of continue on that kind of tactical urbanism approach. I think this can be the proof of concept period to then make a kind of permanent changes to the, the public right away.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. Any, any other comments from the committee? Okay. Can we move on to item number eight, program updates? Again, Rob, thank you and staff. Thanks for that occupancy or the parklet update.
I'll let Victor and Sarah take over on, on the updates. But one thing I want to say under the guise of the new budget. So I want to acknowledge the downtown Santa Barbara, downtown Santa Barbara's role, that organization's role in helping us get to this fiscal year, new fiscal year. It's been in the, when the works for about a year and a half, we've talked with them about taking over the maintenance in this new budget and having them focus their attention and money on, on marketing. And you may know that Robin Elander was, is the new interim director for that. And that's, she's amazing. She comes out of the, she comes out of the solstice event planning and open streets planning and is ideal for this new structure where downtown Santa Barbara is responsible for marketing and activating the street. So really, really good timing. Couldn't have done this better. Combined with the, the downsides of COVID, the upside is this transition's working really well. And, and downtown parking has has three agreements, one for landscape, one for janitorial services and one for power washing. So we're taking over that effort. Our, just for the committee that under our budget, those three elements encompass not just the plaza, but the entire operation of our lots. So maintenance, the janitorial services in the lot, landscape in the lot, power washing is, is isolated to, to the plaza and Victor and Sarah may have more on that, but I just want to acknowledge that successful transition.
Okay, Mr. Chair. So I'll be stepping in for program updates today. The first one that we wanted to note is that fiscal year 2021 started on July 1st. So happy new year to everybody. We're working on wrapping up and closing out our FY 20 budget right now. We don't quite know yet where our final numbers are going to land in terms of revenues and expenditures. But as we've discussed with this committee before, on account of all the closures in the pandemic, obviously, we had a, a pretty, pretty rough year for downtown parking. It'll be using a fairly significant amount of reserves to cover our, our operations during the time when our lots were closed and we weren't generating any revenue. So we'll have a future update for you guys on that, where all that ends up landing up. And the new fiscal year is bringing some, some, some pretty big changes for downtown parking. As Rob mentioned, we're taking over the plaza maintenance responsibilities from the downtown organization. And so we've been working on getting all of those contracts started up. So we'll be assuming that responsibility as we go forward and we'll have more on that to come. And the other thing we wanted to mention is that we have reopened our public counter in our office on a very limited capacity. So we have a limited number of appointment only slots for in-person service. During this time with the closures and the office being closed, we have found ways to process any kind of transaction like through the front counter, whether it's buying prepaid cards, commuter permits, monthly parking permits, residential permits, all of that now we can do through email, over the phone. We've always been able to do it by mail, but that, that option still remains and our counter staff are hard at work doing that. But we do have a small number of appointments available for people who, for whatever reason, you know, have technology limitations, things like that, where they absolutely cannot process those transactions from a distance. But we are still encouraging everybody and working with everybody to, to, to get those transactions processed, processed online or over the phone so that we can limit in-person contact. And then we do have in-person contact. Our office staff is working very hard to make sure that that's safe. Again, limiting the number of people requiring masks, doing full sanitation after any, anybody comes into the office. So we do have that service available now on a, on a very limited basis. And that's all I have. One, one more item just to note, there'd been some questions about recruitment for, for the vacancy on this committee and for anybody who, who's, whose term has expired. My understanding now is that that period I believe is going to open up October 9th is the plan based on council approval. But we should be looking at hopefully being able to do recruitment in the fall.
Sarah, thank you. Moving on to nine announcements. I don't, I don't have any. Are there any from staff?
I don't believe that we have any additional announcements. I don't know if Robert Victor had anything they wanted to add.
No, no announcements right now. The only thing I would say about to make you aware of is that we're working on the 400 block of State Street on a, on a closure. We're opening for more pedestrians. We've worked with fire and PD on that. So look for that in the future.
Terrific. Well then, to all the attended committee members and members of the public and those representatives from the city, thank you so much. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members.
Thank you.